All right. Welcome, everybody, to the February 28th, 2023 Edina Planning Commission meeting. On behalf of this full Planning Commission, we are grateful you're here with us today, and those who might be tuning in remotely. We appreciate your curiosity, your participation, and of course, your feedback as we navigate change here together in Edina. The city is committed to continuing to receive and hear your feedback and your input on matters. We've been collecting input through our voicemail, as well as our engagement website, bettertogethedeina.org. It's important that you know that all comments have been received and have been read by us before the start of this meeting. You don't need to submit feedback in any other way. All feedbacks considered equally, regardless of the way in which it's submitted. Tonight, we have two public hearings. Individuals who want to provide testimony remotely for the public hearings can call 786-496-5601 and enter conference PIN 4604947, and that gets you into this meeting. When you're in queue and ready to speak, press star one. An operator will introduce you. When it's your turn, please state your full name and address before speaking. Everyone, including the people who are here tonight, is allowed up to three minutes to speak. Staff member Liz Olson will let anyone who calls in know if they've gone over three minutes. All right. So let's kick this meeting off. The first order of business is to call this meeting to order. There we go. And next, we'll do roll call.
Commissioner Padilla.
Present.
Commissioner Miranda.
Here.
Commissioner who?
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Olson.
Here.
Chair Bennett.
Here. All right. Next on the agenda is the approval of tonight's meeting agenda, and I'd welcome a motion to approve.
Motion to approve tonight's agenda. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Next, we have the approval of the prior meeting's minutes from January 25th, 2023. Before, welcome a motion. If anyone has any comments or proposed revisions, this is the time to share them. Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, next, we have community comment. We will now hear from residents in person who would like to speak about something not on tonight's agenda or scheduled for a future public hearing. You may speak similarly for up to three minutes. After giving your full name and address, the green light at the podium will turn on. When you have 30 seconds left, the yellow light will turn on, and when your time's up, the red light will turn on. So if anyone is here for community comment, please come forward. Seeing none, we will close community comment. One of these days, we'll get someone. All right. So now, we're into the meat of tonight's meeting, and that is our public hearings. So the typical outline for each public hearing is city staff will provide a presentation based on the report and findings that have been discovered so far. It'll come back to the Planning Commission to ask questions. Then the applicant will have a chance to provide a presentation and ask questions or answer questions from the Planning Commission. After that, the public hearing will start, and that's the chance for the public to engage. When the public hearing is done, we will close that and then take it back to the Planning Commission for deliberation and a motion. And so with that, our first public hearing is a subdivision at 4404 Valley View Road, and Director Teague is here to present. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Commission. So as mentioned, the request is a subdivision to divide up, divide the property for a project that was approved by the City Council last year. This is a rendering of those approved plans. The applicant isn't going to make any changes to those plans that were approved. It's simply to divide the property so that each individual unit can be sold for ownership. So this is located in the Valley View Wooddale area. It's the old Burley's Hair Salon site. Previous to that, it was a gas station. The site has been cleaned, and MPC, MPC has approved, documented that it's a clean site, so development can occur there. Site is zoned planned commercial district. So in the PCD district, multi-residential housing is a conditionally permitted use. When the Edina Flats project was approved by the city back in 2017, that conditional use permit for four units was approved on that site. The original four-unit building was never constructed, and then last summer, they came through with that revised plan for the four-row townhouse type of development. So again, this is a subdivision, code compliant. There are no, there's no minimum lot size requirements in the PCD district. Again, that's a conditionally permitted use, and the applicant is intending to build each unit and then sell them off individually. One of the conditions, and this was noted in Better Together, that the site plan that was reviewed indicated the, that the sidewalk was adjacent to the street. One of the conditions of approval of that project was that it does have to be a boulevard-style sidewalk, so that when a building permit comes in, they'll have to construct that boulevard-style sidewalk. So this is actually what is being requested this evening, just the simple plat to establish the lots for each of those units. So you can see where the lot lines would be drawn to separate the two. The buildings would have to be constructed with firewall rating to separate the two units. As I mentioned, the Better Together comments. There was also a comment about selling off the lots individually, and could something else happen on this site? Because there was a site plan approved as part of a commercial, commercially zoned property, no changes can be made to the plan that was approved unless it goes before the Planning Commission and City Council for a change in use or a different structure from what was approved. So there's some built-in protections there. So with that, staff is recommending approval of the plat, subject to the findings and conditions that are highlighted in your staff report. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Director Teague, for the good presentation. Any questions, anyone? Yes. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Director Teague. Just a quick question on just the maintenance. I, if I could look at, yeah, right here, the lot number four and the grassy area just adjacent to Valley View Road on the south side, I'm guessing that the city would be responsible for maintaining the grassy area, and then the residents would be responsible for maintaining just on their lot size. Is that, is that accurate?
That's a good question. I believe the applicant would be responsible for the maintenance here. The city doesn't have crews that come in and, and mow those types of areas, so that would be the responsibility of the, of the property owner. The city doesn't own that land. We just own the rights to put sidewalks or streets within that area, so we would not maintain that grassy area outside of the sidewalks.
Okay. Thank you.
Now would be the applicant's time for either presentation, or if you wanted to answer any questions the Planning Commission might have, like the previous question, perhaps, please come up.
Rebecca Remick, owner of City Homes. I don't really have any comments other than just the approved plan, just trying, after we got everything on the survey, the actual dimensions in draft in CAD, and just to be able to make sure that the lot lines were specifically through that common wall. So to have a specific defined plat for, that is specific according to actually what we're going to build on the site is, so the lot lines you see are actually where the plat lines will be that are going through that common wall. I am working, and there will be a HOA formed for the exterior maintenance of the site to answer your question. Is there any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Now is the time for the public hearing. So we will now hear from residents who'd like to provide testimony. I guess first, we'll start with those who might be here in person. If you are, please come to the podium, and you have three minutes to speak. Seeing none, we'll move to the, the remote participation. And so whoever is tuning in remotely, again, please call in to 786-496-5601 and enter conference PIN 4604947.
Star. Star one.
Is it star?
I think so. Yeah. Sorry.
Oh, that's all good.
I don't see anyone in the online waiting booth right now, but I recommend we wait one minute, just to make sure nobody else pops on the line. I'll come back to you in one minute.
And then it's press star one, right, when they'd like to speak?
Yeah, star one. It has been one minute, so I think it is safe to proceed.
All right, thank you. So since no one jumped in, I will welcome a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move to close the public hearing. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. All right. So now that the public hearing is closed, it comes back to the Planning Commission to deliberate and discuss, open it up to any of the fellow commissioners to share how they feel about this. And/or would welcome a motion.
I know we, we discussed this property, I forgot the timeframe, but it might have been maybe it's nine months ago or so, is what I'm remembering. And I think somebody, feedback that we got was just only green space, and making sure that we have the right trees and grass, and I know some residents were, were thinking about how could we maintain as much green space as possible. And so from what I could tell, the owner of the property, you know, has some really great ideas of trees that could mature into that space over time, and I think that's, that's really great. Just being careful about the maintenance on that space, I think, would be important. You know, when you, when we look at the, the lot lines and what's the city's responsibility versus the owner's responsibility, I know that's going to be worked out, but we just have to make sure that, you know, that's super clear, and, because what you don't want to have happen is over time, it gets overgrown and there's a confusion on how it's going to get maintained. And so once that's, you know, kind of worked through, I think this would be a really nice location. It'd be from the drawings, really beautiful homes, and so I think it's a very positive thing, and I'll be in favor for approving this.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to recommend the City Council approve the subdivision at 4404 Valley View Road. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations and good luck on your project. All right. Thank you. Next, we have the second of and final public hearing for tonight, and it is a site plan review for 5146 Eden Avenue. This is a former public work site. And again, Director Teague will present, same format as described before. Presentation, questions, another presentation, questions, and then the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, members of the Commission. This is another site that you're maybe even more familiar with than that last one. It's the Public Works Site on Eden and Arcadia, vacant. Re-zoned last summer, or last year, to a planned unit development. And this is a look at the overall development plan that was approved as part of that PUD, an 86-unit senior co-op, a restaurant in the middle of the site, and a park on the north end, as well as the, the bridge over the railroad tracks that's currently under construction. Site's guided for mixed use in the Grandview District. This one has been through sketch plan, again, the, the rezoning of the site, and as you can see from the sketch, plans really haven't changed all that much from the sketch plan to what was approved, to what is proposed this evening. The restaurant is the same size, building materials. There's been some landscaping added in the middle here. You can see the trees within the outdoor, outdoor seating area. So it's a 1,300, 13,500 square foot restaurant, again, with the outdoor dining. What's new is this outdoor pizza oven and bar area and seating, so that's new to the plan from the previous. There's also public restrooms that will be constructed by the applicant, but the restrooms will be for the park to the, to the north. You won't be able to access those restrooms from within the restaurant. It's strictly outside. It's, and they're actually located on the park property. The city will then maintain those moving forward. A few more views of the site. Building materials, wood slats with, it's a three-level building, again, the same as what was proposed at the overall development plan stage, large windows, the openings. So what's requested here is just a site plan review to make sure that it's consistent with the approved PUD for the site. So all of the setbacks are in compliance on all four sides. There's a four-story height limit. This building will be two stories, half underground with that, that third level. Building coverage is code compliant, as well as the FAR requirements. Parking, you may recall, when this went through the last time, there will be 30 surface stalls on the site, and the rest will be provided within the Jerry's parking ramp. There was a parking study done as part of that overall plan, and it was found, on average, there's about 215, 220 stalls open, 166 stalls would be required for the restaurant. So the conclusion was there's adequate parking with the combination of that onsite parking and the Jerry's ramp. So again, here's a look at the site plan access off of Arcadia. Our fire department's reviewed the plans. They have enough turning radius to get their trucks onto the site. Again, the outdoor dining area, the outdoor pizza oven in bar area, event lawn. Essentially, it is the same as we looked at before. The overall plan, there's going to be 85 over-story trees based on the, the entire perimeter of the site. 41 are required, so there's actually above and beyond what the code requires in terms of the landscaping. We had just one comment on Better Together that was favorable for the project. I also want to mention sustainability. As part of the PUD, the, this building is going to be required to meet our sustainability policy. The applicant's been working with our sustainability manager, and that will be a requirement of the structure itself. So with that, staff is recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in the staff report.
Thank you, Director Teague. Take it back to the Planning Commission for questions. Commissioner Padilla?
Yeah, thank you, Director Teague. Just a couple of questions. Are there any other restaurants in Edina that are 13,500 square feet?
Who?
Or that seats, I believe that the seating capacity is 357. Are there's any other restaurants that are large or close to that large?
Yeah, boy, not that I'm aware of. I'm going to turn to Bill. He might, he might know.
Yeah, it's the same size as Chao Bella in Bloomington, and Cheesecake Factory at the mall might be close.
So to repeat for the camera and the microphones, the Cheesecake Factory at the mall has a similar seating, possibly, and the Chao Bella that's located right on the, the border of Edina and Bloomington is similar in size.
Okay, thanks. And then my other question, if you could help me understand, because this, this project is divided into three separate and unique subdevelopments or developments, where does the responsibility, because one of my chief concerns is access to this for pedestrians and cyclists. So I know there's a lot of discussion about the roundabouts and stuff that are near there, and there's even, there's a lot of residential across, on the other side of the roundabout, and they're building, there's more nearby. Where does the owners have responsibility in terms of these different developments? Does it just fall to the city in terms of making this all pedestrian-friendly, or nobody who's doing any of the building here is taking on any piece of that, correct?
Well, each, each site will have, like, when the senior project is constructed, there will be the boulevard-style sidewalk that you see here and here. When the restaurant is developed, you see it'll be continued, and then the city is responsible for the construction of the sidewalks here that connect the bridge, as well as the, the sidewalks and switchbacks within the park.
Right. My main concern is the roundabout that's over, that's on the left side that we can't quite see.
As far as who maintains that?
Yeah, and what, at what point it gets decided that there's some kind of traffic control needs to be installed and things like that.
Yeah, that's at the determination of the city. You know, it, there won't be a street light there. The roundabout has been sized per the, the transportation studies that have, that have gone on there, but that, that is the city's responsibility.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Commissioner Smith?
Sure. Thank you again, Director Teague. I know it's going to be done in a, in a two-phase project, phase one, phase two. Any sense of timing of when phase one would begin and end, and could we use that restaurant, Grandview Yard area, while phase two is being developed later?
I might ask Bill to come up and speak to the phasing, who's been kind of the, the staff person in charge of coordinating all this, so I'll turn it over to Bill.
Great, thanks. Yes, good evening. Bill, Bill Newendorf, the city's economic development manager. So this site is actually going to be built in three phases. The first phase of construction would be the senior co-op. That was approved back in October, I believe it was. They're currently in further financing, and if all goes well, they expect to break ground in late summer or fall of this year. Once they get started, about six to nine months after that, phase two is expected to start, and that's the restaurant. And as the restaurant has our foundations in place and is starting to do interior work, then phase three starts, which is the park. So ideally, all, well, all three projects are of different scale, different complexity, and different time length to build, to get them built. The ultimate goal is to have them all finished at about the same time, subject to landscaping and winter conditions and all those kinds of things that we, that, you know, that we always work with. So in the interim, the city's made arrangements between each of the three elements to share the space. It's still a relatively small site. So for example, as the senior building is under construction, they will use the restaurant site for their staging, their construction trailer, et cetera. As the restaurant gets built, they'll use some of the future park space for their staging, and then as the park gets built, we'll use some of their space for our staging and, and transactions. So it's, it's a complex construction scenario with three different owners, three different contractors, but so far, we continue to work well together, and, and that's where we're aiming as far as our schedules.
I would add to that, one of the conditions of approval is, at the time of a building permit, a construction management plan is required. So all of that coordination that, that Mr. Newendorf was referring to gets memorialized in a construction management plan.
Great. If I could just follow up on one other question. I know it was, it was, it was mentioned, the financing. Is there any other major administrative items that are still pending that the developers need to provide before they start working? So the financing, I think, was one part, but is there anything else that isn't in works? Nothing?
Not that would prevent construction. One thing that the restaurateur would need to seek approvals on is a liquor license, and that goes before the City Council, and that's when the outdoor seating is examined and the barriers, those types of things.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Teague? All right. We will welcome the applicant to the podium to provide a presentation. Just please introduce yourself and where you live.
Hi, my name is Brent Frederick with Jester Concepts, the restaurant developer.
Hi, Jordan Brookins O'Shea, the design partner with Jester for the project.
Should we just talk about it? Okay. We're very excited to propose this today. I'm an Edina resident, reside at 5108 Blake Road in Edina, with my wife and my three kids. Kids go to OLG. We shop at Jerry's. Like, this is our community. So love the Hilltop, but it being the only thing on the western edge of Edina, I feel really passionate about this project to bring another restaurant. And this was really done through and designed through the lens of the community, like, where would my family want to go? So you made a great comment. It's a very big restaurant. I, I understand, but three-quarters of the space is actually outdoor and seasonal, and it, it was meant to kind of blend with the park a little bit. I think we see a lot of- I think we see a lot of people from the, from, from the apartments or the, or the co-op being able to meander their way around the park through our space as well and we provided little pathways for that to happen. So, if they want to grab a pizza slice as well and sit down, there's a grassy area, we see kids playing out there, we see families. So, we also have more of an event space on the top level and I think that, that's taking up a third of that large piece and it's not going to be filled every single night, but I think as a community, a restaurant, we want to have a space to provide for that, that top level kind of event space if there's a birthday or wedding anniversary, who knows what that might be. The main level is really our restaurant and it's not very big. Seating goes, I want to say maybe on the main level.
120?
It's 100, 120 seats, which is really standard for a restaurant, especially what I'm used to. And then downstairs is kind of like a little bit of, if anyone's familiar with Minneapolis' restaurants, which is where we normally operate, like a little cocktail bar, like craft cocktails. So, that would, that would be kind of a little, there's something for everyone in this space, but most of it, I would say three quarters of it is meant for the, the community and their families. So, that is my pitch.
Yeah, maybe just to add a little bit, there's seating, Carrie mentioned the added trees, so a variety of lounge seating, dining height, fire pits. We have a few sort of, we're calling them glass houses that will allow the lawn or the patio space to be used all year round. Maybe not so much the hearth area, but activity in the open green space, definitely all year round. And then these, these are those glass huts that I was just mentioning. So activity all year round, potentially paired with some programming with the city. Jester providing the food and drink that could be brought from the restaurant to the event space. I think there was, you know, brainstorming ideas of do your picnic package and you get your picnic and a bottle of wine, you can go and hang out on this lawn and maybe the same could be said for, for the winter as well. Yeah.
Let me speak to that real quick. We've had a lot of ideas on activation for the park and I, I think it's more of a, we've, we've been working really well with, with the city and the partners and the, and the developers for, for the co-op as well. And we've talked about activation, we're happy to do it a few times a year or if there's something we want to get on a regular cadence, you have to do something once a week and activate it. That's fine. And we could have bands, we could have movies in the park. Again, very community-based things. I see families with young kids such as mine being in both spaces. So, we're, we're happy to work with the city on the activation piece in any way they see fit. It's, it's the city's park and we're, we're happy to facilitate, so.
All right.
Questions?
Thank you, yeah, questions?
Hi, thank you for your presentation. It looks beautiful. My questions are around, excuse me, just what you said, the activization, excuse me, of the area in the winter especially. Could you talk a little bit more about how your food service will work? Is it going to be a breakfast to dinner type of place or is it just dinner only and maybe if the main restaurant isn't fully open, are, will there be like a snack bar? Could you talk a little bit more about your ideas for that?
Yeah, there's, on the activation front, only for the park or just the restaurant itself, just like?
That rest, your restaurant area where you have the little?
So in, in the winter, it's going to be pretty limited, you know, you know, some restaurants have like these, like little igloos and whatnot. These will be a little bit more spacious, a little bit more permanent, let's put it that way. And the food would, would come from the main dining room, have to keep it warm somehow, we'll figure that out. But I don't see there being, I mean, if it's cold outside, we know how the winter goes here. Just people being outside, it's snowing out, I think just, I think it'll be a beautiful space with the trees kind of around you and the snow falling and it's dark out and you're spending it with your family or friends. So, I don't know how much more activation there will be other than that, but that's, that's my vision just for those little spaces.
For that little space, I would just encourage you to think really creatively because I do feel, and this isn't just your restaurant, but just in Minnesota in general, I feel like we kind of shut down and it, with heaters, fire pits, things that kind of blankets, things that can extend, since it is such a large area, that encourage you to do that.
Yeah, happy, happy to do that and happy to look into that. We do have fire pits and if they want to be outside in the cold, absolutely. I mean, we can, we can have blankets made, so that's great, great feedback.
And then if you could just speak to the food service part of my question?
As far as what type of food?
Well, are you going to be, you know, brunch, breakfast to dinner?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
And then if your full restaurant isn't fully operational, will there be a place to like park, park people could pick up like a donut or something?
As far as pickup, like we plan on having valet and we'll, we'll figure something out as a, as a pickup thing. I definitely want to do pickup and pizza's going to be big, we'll have delivery probably somehow, we just have to figure that out. But we're only planning on lunch and dinner right now. Breakfast is, I don't see that working for this concept, it's a little bit more refined and while pizza can be great for, for breakfast, it might not entice everybody, so, but we're always open to expanding hours if there's a desire. I think going into it with the labor market the way it is, I don't want to over commit because it's, it's fairly tough right now, so. But I think lunch and dinner, we feel pretty strong about.
I think that's great. I'm looking forward to, to coming when it's built. Again, just, I think because of the park piece of it, it's just, it would be nice if, you know, if you're closed in the morning and everything's shut down and the, you know, if there would just be a place where people could ride their bikes and maybe get a soda or, or grab a bagel or, or something, some way to keep the site active when you're, when you're not open, I guess is the point. Thank you.
It could be a coffee cart, there could be, yeah, I love all those ideas. So, I think, I don't know how far down the road we've gotten as far as, because I don't know if y'all are going to say yes yet, so it's like, how far do you get into a concept before you know, to spend the energy? But I think we've, we've done quite a bit here, so thank you for your feedback.
Any other questions? Commissioner Padilla?
Yeah, thank you. It does look very interesting and I appreciate how much you're doing toward inclusivity of all the different parts of the area and the people. My question is about delivery trucks and things like that and service vehicles. Would they just be coming around kind of that side there through the parking lot and where's all your delivery and trap, you know, dumpsters and things like that?
Yeah, so Jordan can point right now, they will come down on our parking lot and then we've, we've designed it where they're able to come in and then also back out and we'll make sure that we time that. Most of our deliveries are in the morning to, like late mornings or, you know, early afternoon, so with us being open at lunch, we'll probably push that from like that nine to 11 window or eight to 11 window, but, but yeah, we, we believe that we've, we have enough room there for people to get in and out.
And on the subject of deliveries, I hope you would plan on delivering to the senior building across the way there. I think that would be a built-in market for you.
I think that's a great idea.
And I, I believe in the initial one, I don't know that if I saw it in this one, but the last time you were here, we talked about there were going to be a few EV stations?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I don't know what, what the requirement is, if we have to meet that, if it's optional, still we'll absolutely do that. I just, I don't know how many people in Edina have electric cars versus what. I'm open to feedback or if there's a requirement, we'll make sure to hit that, so.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'm remembering 15% or some number around there, which, yeah, we're still planning on.
Okay, I just didn't see anything in the new information, so.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes?
I think this is really pretty. I'm curious about the parking lot, can you talk more about it and if there will be like overflow parking of sorts and if that's like all the parking spaces that you have? And also, is the parking lot going to be like on an elevated like different material or is it going to be on asphalt or like, I don't know, but yeah.
We can talk to the material part.
Yeah, we're starting to show and explore trying to differentiate between the drive aisle versus the parking areas, but you're right, it's a small parking lot due to the size of the site. Carrie had mentioned earlier, for the restaurant specifically, we'll be utilizing the, the Jerry's parking ramp and Jester offers complimentary valet, so that's part of the package deal. There's 30 spots on site including four planned ADA stalls right now. And yes, if, you might have seen this in one of the plans, there is a grade change from the restaurant parking to the parking of the, the co-op. So, we do have a bit of a slope on this side, you can start to see it there, but almost, like it's very small, I believe it's 3% slope.
Yeah, back to the, the parking lot, 30 stalls for the size of a restaurant is really very small. So we are going to supplement that with complimentary valet, which we do everywhere at our other locations. It's kind of, it's kind of our thing, if you will. And then the, I believe it's city lot, but it, I think it's behind Jerry's, so that, we, we plan on utilizing that quite a bit. We might also look to some of our neighbors to contract with them. We have private contracts all over Minneapolis that we get with landowners, so we'll, we'll look at all options for the parking.
Any other questions? Commissioner Smith?
Yes, thank you. Great presentation. It definitely looks like a wonderful spot to hang out. Just two questions, well, three questions. The first one was, you know, just any concerns at all with, you know, the park space and, and alcohol? You know, I could totally see on your property, that lawn area would be a great spot to hang out and I'm sure you could bring drinks out there. But then right next to it is the public park and so, you know, that's like a different zone essentially. Just any thoughts that you have with how you would manage, you know, alcohol flowing into that area and making sure that it's not going to be an, an issue at all and, and you, and you guys will be covered? So that's the first one. The second one was, was, was really around, you know, we're, we're building a, an active space right next to a location where there's going to be seniors. And so noise and, and some of that, sometimes, you know, seniors could be sensitive to that. So just, you know, what would your noise measures look like, hours of operation and do you sense any impact to a senior co-op being right next to the activity? And then finally, you know, anything here that surprises you, right? Like anything that would be new for your experience, you know, you, you certainly run other restaurants in, in different areas. What unique challenges that you see that would be a, a growth where you're learning experience for you and your, and your company?
All great questions. And my, my memory's not amazing, so I might have to have you repeat all three, I'm not a good at the one, two, three questions, but I'll start with the first one, I think, which is probably the, maybe the most important topic, is making sure that alcohol does not go into the park. I think that's really important and it's something that we've talked about as a, as an operator, as a group, how are we going to do that? There are, there are simple things we can do like signage, but that's not going to do everything. We have to monitor, we have to actively monitor, our management has to monitor, our staff has to monitor. I feel confident about it, but it will, it will be a challenge, there's no doubt about it. We have to communicate properly, we have to train our staff properly, so that's on us and we'll know that going into it. I think another thing that might blur the lines too a little bit is we'll most likely file for temporary expansion of premises into the park for larger activations. If we get one or two a year, if we want to do a fun Oktoberfest, it might, it might be fun to allow that, but again, normal service, people are going to be drinking on our property and if they are here for one of those events, they might think that they can do that. So, we're cognizant of that issue and I think as long as we are going into it, we can properly plan and, and train for that. So hopefully that helps answer the question. Remember the last one, what's number two again?
Number two was just the noise.
The noise, yeah. So, it's 55 plus, so I've made this mistake calling it a senior housing development and they told me, no, no, it's more like empty nesters. I'm like, okay, empty nesters, it's not, it's not a senior. We are not going to be a late night party, that's not what we do. We're more elevated dining and our restaurants speak to that. We don't, we don't have anything in our track record that's, that speaks to anything that's late night, loud, amplified music like that. So, I'm not super worried. The only, the only thing would be ambient noise through dining hours, which typically, and for what I know, I've never had a suburban restaurant before, but I have friends, the hours are a lot, the, the night ends a lot quicker. Downtown Minneapolis, people dine until 11. That doesn't typically happen in Minnetonka, why is that, Edina, Eden Prairie. People are kind of out in that nine to 10, so, or earlier to tell you the truth. So, but in the summer, it's outside, it's still daylight out, we want to be careful of that ambient noise, but there won't be any loud amplified noise, so. And we've had a great relationship already with, with the developers and we'll maintain contact with their association and we're always happy to tweak, we want to be a good neighbor, those are our customers, so. And then the challenge question, which is the one I remember. For me, building a new building, I, I've never owned, never owned land, never developed land before, so I'm relying on people like Shay and our, and our contractor and the city for that matter, to help us out. We've always just leased buildings, so this is something new for us. But I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity to, to develop in our own city and in our community, so.
Any other questions? Yeah?
So just take me through your, your vision for the valet in terms of like logistically, where do you see it happening on the parking lot? Because it's, it's a relatively small parking lot and you don't want to restrict the traffic flow in and out of the parking lot a lot, so just take me through that.
Yeah, you bet. So Jordan's got the, the cursor here, so typically you want to get valet as close to the door as possible. You don't want people walking too far from when they get out of the car, it's, it's supposed to be convenient. So, the arrow here will stop right there, kind of right at that corner and that is an area that people will get out onto the sidewalk and go right in. We believe, this is only a one-way by the way, it looks like a two-way, it's wide enough, we believe, but the car can get close enough to that sidewalk where they can get out and if another car comes in behind it, doesn't find a parking spot or does not want a valet, they'll have room around that car on the left-hand side. That's, that's our vision, but I, it wouldn't be the first time we've had to adapt to a problem, so we're, we're ready for those challenges though.
Good? Yeah? All right, yeah, thank you. Nice presentation. I got a couple of questions for you. Most of the planning commissioners asked all the ones I had, but maybe on the note of valet and just, you know, making it clear of how traffic's flowing, aside from the vehicle, where do you foresee how you activate and, you know, engage people on bikes and walking? That's just not as clear to me when I look at the site.
Yeah, and Jordan probably can help out on this a little bit, but there is a sidewalk on Arcadia that comes down and we do have sidewalks alongside, it's the same color as, as the stalls though, so maybe that's why it's a little tough to see. But in front of the cars alongside the grass is, is a sidewalk coming from Arcadia, so. And then also the pedestrian bridge from the parking there comes down through the park, right into our space as well. There's no, there's an abundance of sidewalks on our property in and out of the, in and out of, there's almost a grid line basically that allows the flow through from the park to, to the co-op and then also to our restaurant. But as an avid biker, I bike into Minneapolis if the Cedar Line Trail wasn't closed down, but I, I bike through Harriet's and, and the lakes in the summer. So I'm a biker, we're going to make sure that we have. biker, I bike into Minneapolis if the Cedar Line Trail wasn't closed down. But I bike through Harriet's and, and the lakes in the summer. So I'm a biker. We're going to make sure that we have bike parking. That's important. So.
Yeah.
You may be curious or maybe asking also about accessibility access from the bridge. So we've been working with the city as well to figure out, what's that best path from the bridge? Say, an accessible person is parking at the overflow lot. We're trying to figure out how to make a united or sort of one line of ADA route from, from the bridge to the restaurant.
Okay, thank you. I think the majority of my other things are just comments for discussion points. But maybe to just kind of urge some direction toward the activation standpoint. I mean, if you use this area, Grandview, there, there isn't enough places for people to gather currently, as you know. I mean, if you go to Hilltop, it's tons of parking out on the street elsewhere. Jerry's, if you just go there in the morning, I mean, there's tons of people hanging out. So I definitely like the ideas that have been mentioned about really catering to try to activating the site kind of throughout the day. So if you're opening for lunch, there are a lot of people that'll be out and about, especially in the summer, in the morning time. So if they're using the park, definitely urge you guys to accommodate. And then, you know, one, one thing that was lacking from this overall development, that was always a big part of it, was that gathering space. So for just, for people that can just get together. So we know it's winter half the year. And half the time, someone just wants to sit at a table and catch up with someone. And their options are Caribou, which is tight, and Jerry's, which is tight. So again, if there's ways to activate space, even if there's not much service, or a limited amount of service, I'd really encourage you guys to, you know, contemplate and try to get creative and figure that out. Because this will be very successful, and you'll, you'll probably just want to do it for better business, too. But that's to the extent of my comments/questions. Do you have any response to that or not?
Yeah, agree with you completely. This is a major opportunity to, to have an activation and a gathering space. And to be honest, like, we have ideas, but we're happy to take more. Like, we're talking about, you know, having a little session to talk about activation and multiple sessions. So I invite all of you, if you want to join us, like, we'd be happy to hear those thoughts.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? All right, now is the time for the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as, as with the prior public hearing, anyone who is here in person, please come to the podium. You have three minutes to speak. When the light turns green, 30 seconds when it turns yellow, and when it's red, we'll let you know. Your time's up. Anyone here? All right, we will go to the call-in. And as before, to participate, please call in at 786-496-5601 and enter conference PIN 4604947. It says pound, but, and then enter star one to participate.
We'll have to update that.
All right. So then star.
I don't see anyone in the online chat room yet, but I would recommend we wait one minute due to, due to the delay in the broadcast, just to give anyone a chance here. So I will come back to you in one minute.
Thank you. Really need some music. Jeopardy or elevator stuff. We're going to work on that.
Seeing no one on the line, I think it is safe to proceed. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, so moved. All right, so the public hearing has closed. We'll bring it back to the public, or the planning commission for discussion and ultimately a motion. Who would like to start? All right, Commissioner Miranda?
Yeah, so I'm going to speak to the, with the staff recommendation that talks about approval based on the four findings. And I'm going to go through them in reverse. Number four is existing roadways and parking would support the project. And I think they clearly would. I mean, obviously, when it's at peak capacity, it's going to be pretty busy in the area. But I don't think it's going to be anything that would be catastrophic or anything. And most of the time, I think it would be fine. You know, the three is the restaurant meets development standards, and two is the plans are consistent with the plan for the site. And that's true. But when it comes to number one, the proposed land uses and density are consistent with the comprehensive plan. I have to keep going back to the Grandview framework. And, you know, you look at things like page 16, 17, 18. And, you know, it talks about the specific block, which is owned by the city. And, you know, it shows a dramatically different building scale here. And this, I mean, having a restaurant in this area is wonderful. It sounds like it's going to be a great place. They've got beautiful things and creative things, and there's all sorts of great things about it. But as a first ring suburb, we have so few commercial areas in our city. And we have plans for each of them, which are part of the comprehensive plan. And the Grandview plan here just doesn't really show a, a two-story restaurant with lots of open space and, you know, two rows of parking. So, so I think it doesn't really meet that criteria at all. So, so I'm going to vote against this. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Smith, yeah?
Sure, I could sit me. Yeah, I know this Grandview lot location was, was, you know, very important for this region and for the city. It was one of the only spots, I think, that the city actually owned. We certainly get a lot of feedback and comments from other cities and folks saying, hey, you know, we have this great community center with a pool in this city, and why don't you guys have that in Edina? And why can't you guys use this spot to do that? So there's definitely a, a huge need in the city for a gathering place. And this was essentially one of those places where I think it was envisioned. However, from the last few cycles and the multiple plans that have been reviewed with the city, with the developers, you know, the cost, the size, the iterations of designs, it just didn't turn out that this could have been that spot for a, you know, really great, wonderful park slash community center slash place where families could come and hang out. That being said, I think the city and the team worked really hard to try to make it work. And I really do like the comments of, you know, if we could activate this site, so much so that residents could come here and really enjoy it, you know. So we know it's, it's not the idealist thing that we wanted in the, in the comprehensive plan. But it's, it's a really great spot to have that community get together during the warm summertime, to do fun things. You bring your kids, you hang out on the grass, you watch a movie. You know, families just come and watch a play, just different ideas. I think working through those ideas to activate the spaces would, would help in that direction of making a community gathering location. And so, you know, from all the work that was done in the past, and it's meeting a lot of these requirements, I'll be in favor. Because I know the city and the developers and the team worked really hard to try to activate this space into what was in the comprehensive plan. And I think this is the best that we could do at this point. And the more we could encourage the activation of these spaces, the better. And so I'll, I'll be particularly excited to, to just learn more about the activation and, and attending events in, in this location.
Thank you. Any other, yeah, Commissioner Padilla?
Yeah, I kind of, to go off of Commissioner Smith's comments, I think the restaurant idea looks very attractive. It sounds very attractive. It sounds like you're open to working with other people. And I think it's just important to acknowledge that in this space, you are taking on quite a bit of responsibility in addition to just running a restaurant. You are, you are taking on the responsibility of bringing a community together. That's what basically I think people are asking of you. And that's what it sounds like you're willing to take on. And that's, that's, that's a great onus that you are willing to do. And, and, you know, I think we thank you for that. And again, as some of my fellow commissioners mentioned, I would encourage you to accommodate, if not all people, as many as you can, and certainly all viewpoints, you know. And things like limiting hours, when everybody would like to gather at different times of the day, you know, if you could have, I mean, you mentioned you ride to the Carribean, like a bread and pickle option, you know, in one corner of it someplace, so that there are places to go other times. So within the context, if you're willing to take on this additional responsibility of being this, this to the community, I will vote in favor.
Comments from you? All right, I guess I'll, yeah?
I think this place has a lot of potential. It definitely fits like my view of what Edina is. And I definitely do see a lot of high schoolers like Cheyenne and I, or peers going to this place to just hang out outside at the park in the restaurant. It offers a lot of outdoor opportunities to kind of just like, take a walk. I definitely see myself biking over here, just hanging out at the park, maybe reading a book or something. So yeah, I really like it. I can't vote, but I really like it.
You got any comments? Great.
Yeah, I think I really appreciate the amount of greenery and thought into what the community wants into the project, especially with the senior co-op being nearby and this being a place for them to visit in terms of like pedestrian-wise. Just going off of what Sarah said, I think this would be a place where people of all ages would be willing to gather, especially if like, it's really open and, and welcoming the way you have proposed it to be. So yeah, I think it's a really good concept.
Thanks. All right. I have a few comments to make. So I'm at the point where, and I hope you can appreciate and understand that I will begrudgingly be in support of this. And why I say begrudgingly is, the reason I joined the planning commission, you know, almost seven years ago and got involved civically was because of this overall site. Shortly after moving to Edina, you know, the dream was on the table to be written. And the whole framework for the entire area centered around the redevelopment of this site. And the dream was, this would be a catalyst to totally transform the Grandview district. And so most of my angst comes prior to the site plan. We have very little discretion in that pyramid. The bigger decisions have been made that have guided this overall site as to what it is. And the dream could have been huge. And talking to other people, residents, friends from other communities of what you could do with three acres in the center of an area that really is ripe for change, could be something so much better than a very suburban concept of standalone buildings. But here we are today, that PUD has been approved. And while I, I also agree with Commissioner Miranda that maybe the first condition is definitely not met in my eyes, what you are doing with your individual site is about as good as you could do individually. And so most of this angst comes from, this ought to have been a much more holistic type of gathering space for a variety of reasons that I've shared in the past. And I feel like our, our leadership has failed in some ways to achieve and be really bold with what could have been here. But with what you have at the table, I think what you're presenting to us is going to be really nice. And, you know, you got a couple of young people next to me saying they picture themselves going there, and that's the goal. So, you know, as long as you can commit to activating the site as much as we would like, and you're promising, I'm going to be showing up. I'll be here. I'll be supporting the business, but I'll also be scrutinizing and hopefully collaborating on how we can make the most of this. Because it truly will be, you know, the opportunity to really bring the community in. And then hopefully, like the development framework suggests, spur redevelopment around it. And that only comes with drawing a ton of people there. That will foster redevelopment to the east and other places in the district. So that's kind of where I'm at. And that's where I'm at. Any other comments? Okay, well, I will entertain a motion for tonight's.
Motion to recommend the city council approve the site plan at 5146 Eden Avenue.
Second?
And let's do a roll vote here.
Commissioner Padilla?
Aye.
Commissioner Miranda?
Nay.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Chair Bennett?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good luck with your project. Congratulations. You'll see more of us, for sure. Yeah. All right, thank you. All right, so change is happening. And now we are on to our next agenda item, and that is the chair and member comments. I guess I can share one. Certainly, it's likely been news to you, but Commissioner Alkire has resigned from his post due to being out of town, spending most of his time in Utah. I don't know if, did everyone get the message? Yeah. So if he's tuning in, we definitely would like to thank him for his service. He won't be at another meeting in person with us. He'll, he'll be carrying out the remainder of the Cahill Small Area Plan. So that's great. But like to just thank him for all of his great effort and wish he was still on board. And, you know, hopefully, when he's back to Minnesota, he joins again. All right. Any other chair member comments?
So then do we have to elect a new vice chair?
So what we're going to do is, since we have new incoming commissioners in not the meeting after next, we'll, we'll do that then. So we'll just hold off. If that makes, that works. So at least we can deliberate in the meantime and just reach out to myself or Lou or Carrie if you have interest, and let's chat. I guess one other thing of, I guess, news to share, Commissioner Miranda and I sat in during a Grandview transportation update meeting last Monday. Was it Monday? Tuesday? Monday or Tuesday? Doesn't matter, right? What matters is it happened. And a lot of updates were shared with kind of a tremendous amount of different transportation items happening around the Grandview area. And I guess Chad Milner, the head of engineering, gave the meeting, and a lot of, a lot of commentary live and remotely happened, a lot of participation. I guess I have a couple takeaways, and I'm sure Lou could share. A lot of it, you know, kind of is focused on areas where there's money at play that the city can harness. So where there's So where there's TIF funds, so specific to the Perkins site and the radius that touches, there's going to be a reconfiguration of that entrance from, from the Sunny Slope neighborhood, that's planned. The, the city applied for a couple sets of funding, one of which they didn't get, which was pretty disappointing, was a Vernon Avenue modernization plan, so it was basically trying to achieve what's in the Grandview transportation plan, and that's bringing Vernon, basically in front of Jerry's, down to one lane in each direction with shared turn lanes, so you'd have dedicated boulevard sidewalks and protected bike lanes. That didn't get funding, so that's not moving forward. The one thing that did get funding and will kind of happen in concert with the Vernon Avenue Bridge over the railroad is a diverging diamond interchange from Highway 100. If you don't know what that is, Google it. If you haven't driven through it, you'll be confused at first, but that is kind of consolidating some of that wasted interchange space, because Vernon used to be the old 169. That's why we have all of this, this weird kind of spaghetti network to get you onto the interstate, so this will be a little more efficient, create some new space. Other than that, there isn't much particularly around the site we just talked about, except the pedestrian bridges going, going to be completed this year, and am I missing anything, Lou? No? But yeah, it's, a lot of the focus is on maintaining traffic flow, kind of consolidating access to the freeway to less places, so there might be some conflict we may see with really prioritizing the, the bicycle and pedestrian experience as a result. So we'll just have to stay on top of that and just, I guess, hope for the best. Anything else? Chair member comments? Yeah, Commissioner Smith?
Sure, I could certainly add a few comments here. So two, two, two comments, actually. The first one is, yesterday, I actually met with some neighborhood association leaders within the city. We do this periodically, maybe once every couple of months, just to check in, I'm on the neighborhood association for Strack Hour, and we just got together to talk about, you know, ways that we could better engage the city with feedback and ways that the city could engage us with developments that are happening around the city. And so we're very early in that conversation, but it's just a great way to connect. One of the key takeaways that occurred in the meeting was an invitation that the planning commission meet with some of these neighborhood association leaders maybe once a year, or once every six months, just to chat, to find out how's it going, you know, we make decisions, development occurs, is the intended outcome, what they're experiencing, what we, what we expected, those kind of things. And so I certainly want to invite, and I could certainly help lead that, but set up the meeting where us, the planning commission, could take some time, meet with some neighborhood association leaders, and just a, a very informal just conversation. So I think that might be something that, you know, we could talk through, and I'll be more than willing to, to, to champion. The other comment, and this is kind of, I guess, my own vanity, right, but I've not seen much like ribbon-cutting, like when things open, restaurant opens, I would love to see that, and I would love to be invited. So if there's ever a, a restaurant or a new building that's going to have its grand opening, you know, put me on the list, so I can come and check it out, and put the whole planning commission on the list, so we could be the early patrons of that spot, so that's kind of my greedy selfish kind of idea. That's it.
Thank you, that's great. Yeah, there tends to be, I mean, there's some of the items that are contributing to our work plan or certainly will supplement it, are really trying to get more engagement with the community and the things the civic leaders are doing with the way in which lands use, so I'd show up and watch someone cut a ribbon and take a golden shovel and scoop a thing of dirt, let's do it. Anything else? I'll turn it to staff comments. Carrie?
Yeah, a couple things to follow up on, on Chair Bennett's discussion of the, the Grandview transportation. The city engineer sent me a link to his presentation, and I will send that to the planning commission so you can see that all for yourself. And just an update from last night's city council meeting, they, the council held the public hearing on the affordable housing ordinance that you all recommended at the last meeting, they'll take action at their next meeting. They, they granted final approval of the 7,272-50 France project. They came back in with the revised plans and met all of the conditions that, well, they, they met the condition that the planning commission put on when they went for the preliminary approval in terms of separating the, the north-south sidewalk from the drive aisle, but they revised the plans to step the building in off of France, so met all of the conditions, and that project received final approval. Commissioner Quincy did a fantastic job presenting on the accessory dwelling units at the meeting last night, and the council would like to have a work session, so you can pencil this in on your calendars, that will be May 2nd. They want to have a discussion about where we can go with the accessory dwelling, with the potential ordinance, they want to learn a little bit more about it. A lot of the background and research has been done, but we need to beef that up and get ready for that. The council work sessions are full, May 2nd is the quickest we could get on, so we got a little time to prepare for it. But just to let you know, that is upcoming. That's it for me.
Thank you, Commissioner Planner-Tee. Jeez, we need you up here, we're three short. If that's it, it is time for our last order of business, and that's adjournment. Welcome a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, aye, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned. Woo!